Yeah. If it was actually 20 or 40 at that time, I don't even know.
It looks like it's, see how it broke? It's a stop.
Yeah.
It stopped.
It next three, you see? So we came back at 1:18, I think.
It just broke while we...
Were you looking at that clock?
Well, I'm... Phew, I'm looking at this, which we've been 46 minutes into the second session.
No, okay.
So, it was quarter up.
Chiefs.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Hello, yeah.
Jimmy.
Yes, sir.
I just saw my shirt.
Was that a short joke you could do?
No, 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 no.
Let me, go ahead and come out with the best thing.
It's my 18 eyes. Okay, well, welcome.
I'm good with it.
Um, we'll do the same as we did last year. If you want to talk to staffing to give us a little bit of an overview. If you want to talk about directions, major things that you have in your budget, that'd be great, and then we will ask the questions. We're not going to go line by line like we used to do one time ago. We're going to hit the questions that each of the council people had, and then we'll see where we go.
Appreciate it, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. We started talking about staffing. It's no surprise that we have been fortunate that we were able to acquire the 12 safer funded positions. But we also understand the costs associated with those 12 positions, not only from the federal government, but also from the city's match of that. So we understand that that's a huge cost to both entities. So when we start talking about staffing, we feel pretty comfortable right now where our staffing is. All of our fire stations are now open 24 hours a day. Three capital fire unit staff, three EMS unit staff. And just in a short period of time of them effectively going on shift, we have started to see improvements in our response times, our travel times, getting to emergencies, both fire and EMS, and also our ability to assemble the right amount of people on fire scenes with those additional staff. And so that has been huge for us. One of the other components that you would see in our staffing or in our essential items is the SWIFT position, the Mobile Integrated Healthcare Provider. Fortunately, that has all been grant funded, and we continue to acquire additional funds for that to sustain that program because there is a huge value that's associated with that program. At some point, we're sure that a well is going to run dry with the grant funds for that position. So we'll have to make a determination about the life, future life of that program. But right now, it is making a huge impact to the community and the people in Salisbury, Salisbury District with that program, so.
We had a discussion about that this morning with Personnel Committee. And I think, I, it wasn't appropriate to ask them, but I'll ask you. The impact that we've seen within the SWIFT team and the reduction in calls, which then frees up time for people to make real calls. If you had two teams, would there be any significant difference?
Would there be additional, yes. Yes, I believe we would see an additional reduction in calls. The issue is, we would have to have additional staff from PRMC, the nurse practitioner.
On your side.
Because of the enrolling in that program. It can be time consuming, enrolling the people into the program, so they would have to provide additional staff. Our staff is great at the checking up on them. So having additional people assigned to that program to be able to get them out on the street, to get them to those individuals, following up with them routinely would definitely be an asset. But we would have to have additional support from PRMC to enroll more people because it's, again, difficult for that one nurse practitioner to enroll a large number of people on a regular basis, so.
Now, the follow-up loaded question.
Yes.
Is, we heard, I know how many guns our ambulance just make a day, and they're pretty busy.
Yes.
It's between 30 and 40.
So what is the point at which you're going to have to fully fund another ambulance group versus the investment and the convincing of PRMC to add another SWIFT group? Is there a relationship between the two?
Yes, and we would say that probably at the point that we're at with call volume, ideally, we should have another EMS unit staff, at least through a peak demand, which would be the 7A to 7P timeframe. Because that's when the influx of calls happen, and we run out of units on a regular basis during that 12-hour period.
So you could not, and I'm going to summarize it. Maybe I'm not going to do it right correctly. If you had another ambulance that you could stay after in the 7th of 7, and be a backup during the rest of the time, the SWIFT team wouldn't have enough, would not have enough impact to negate the need for that ambulance?
I don't believe it would negate.
Okay.
Because we're at that point right now with our call volume and our unit utilization is above what three EMS units can effectively handle in that 12-hour timeframe.
I was afraid you'd not say that. But that's, we're growing.
We are, and although it doesn't happen all the time, but when you look at 17 calls after midnight.
17 calls after midnight.
So in a seven-hour period, 17 EMS calls.
Right.
Which is an anomaly now, but it may become the norm with all the growth. You start looking at that after midnight, 17 calls after midnight is not the norm. It's usually, what, that's six or eight, something like that? So that time that you're talking about.
Are they outside of the city limits?
And that's the thing, it's kind of outside the fire service district. So you can have growth in the county, but it does not help us.
Right.
Because we still serve those areas, so we don't get collect revenue, but you still have the calls for services. Some of the conversations we started today.
So as a part of the, and maybe this is a higher level question.
Yeah.
So in our fire services agreement, I think maybe the question is, we're not charging enough for calls, per call for service.
Well, we're in the first agreement.
Yeah.
We would agree.
That's, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
But, yeah, that was a negotiated figure, and they pushed back hard on our numbers.
So.
But you're 100%.
And we still have a clause in there where, at any point, we can go back to them and renegotiate in that time, in this current time period.
We can, we can.
We can request.
We can, yes. Well, no. Each year, we have an opportunity to revisit the rates, so, yeah.
Yeah, because I think what needs to be explained to the other side is we're at a point that the funding's not there. This is going to affect the quality of service that we're going to be providing, not just to city residents, but to county residents. I mean, the fact that, you know, if all of our EMS units are out on a call, and somebody from the county calls, the, you know, these are sometimes life-threatening situations. And so it's for us to properly provide the service we need to, we need more funding.
I know. I would just take you back to remember what was said during negotiations last time by the other side. It literally came down to saying, "I don't care if their house is burned down."
That comment has been made.
That's what we're dealing with. Sorry, until your stuff is burned.
Yeah.
That's what we're dealing with down there.
Yeah.
Somebody you know?
I have a question. When you do these calls, do you separate out or do you have like an Excel sheet of like the city area calls?
Yes.
So you know how many are in the county?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That was part of the negotiations.
Yeah, that'd be part of the, I wonder if it, has it gone up? Has it gone up or has those numbers changed any in the last?
What number are you referring to?
Outside of the city's call area.
The calls that are occurring outside municipal limits has decreased. That's why you're seeing a decrease in the billable amount in the fire service agreement. Because we're actually running more calls within the municipal limits than in our county portion of the fire service. And that has been a trend over the last couple of years, a steady decrease in those calls.
What is the charge for calling service?
One's a $400 EMS transport, $100 for non-transport, and then I think fire is $300. Per call that's happening in, whether it's municipal or the county area.
And this should be related to the actual cost of service?
Right.
They're not, they're a fraction of the actual.
It's 40%, it's 40% is what we're actually getting because of the 60% EMS billing revenue.
It was four or five, and what?
It's 300 for a fire.
300 for fire.
400 for EMS transport, and $100 for non-transport.
And that's only 40% of what the actual cost is.
Fire's 100%. EMS, it's based on what our billable rate of return is, which we're at about 60%. So then they provide 40%.
And when you, when we talk about costs, that is the cost of the actual service, but not you account for infrastructure, just the ability, the abilities you have that available if needed, that cost.
Are you talking about the cost that's built into the fire service agreement?
Meaning, we would love if we could say, "We're going to staff people because only ambulance calls are done right now, but you have to staff because you don't know when fires happen or EMS happens." You have to warehouse equipment, you have to do all that stuff. And that's, you're not billing for the opportunity of emergency.
No.
Okay, do you include the necessary things that you use as far as gloves, IDs, or any, that's not included?
And how the numbers were set, I wasn't part of the actual fire service agreement and the negotiations that occurred, so I wouldn't be able to answer how those numbers were specifically developed to come up with the 300, 400, and the $100.
What is our next opportunity to request a renegotiation?
We have two, we have two years left on the agreement. So we could request that renegotiation now. I'm sure we'll leave that with a no. And we can request again in a year. The next time where we'll legitimately have a chance of renegotiation is maybe at the end of the agreement. But I can tell you, their position is that they want to pay less. They don't want to pay for the service, which is why they're going to get us from the city of Salisbury. And it's their way of getting something of tremendous cost and value on the cheap. So I think we're going to have to have a hard conversation about, it's the same conversation we've had year after year after year, do we just want to end our relationship and say, "We're not providing the service outside of the city anymore." Now, obviously, the downside about this, and I know some of you have heard this 100 times, but the downside of that is people's lives will be at risk because the county will not do what they need to do to take care of those people. Again, I can quote the verbatim thing that was said in the negotiations. So they simply won't do what they need to do to take care of people's homes and lives properly. So the question is, what do we do? I mean, morally, I think we all have felt obligated. That's how we ended up in this situation. Morally, we all feel obligated to help out our neighbors. But financially, it's just not tenable. So either we have to figure it out without them, and I think that's probably the path forward, or the county has to figure out what they're going to be comfortable with, that they can financially live with, which probably includes more than just the Salisbury Fire District. Probably has to be county-wide. They have to come up with a system. You know, I would think that the county could come up with a fire tax system, cut their property taxes, you know, and have a fire tax system and fund it that way, and leave the city out of it financially.
Can I ask a question? And I don't know if this has ever been presented like this, but have, has the city ever presented this to the residents of the county? As far as the city being responsible for them instead of the county taking care of their portion of taking care of the county?
Let me understand how that might happen. You know, how would you see that?
I know that the neighborhood associations, for instance, nutters, nutters became very vocal, had an organized group when they tried to form the other guys. Yes.
Yes.
Just move there. But they were very vocal, and they let, they let the county know what their position was.
And yes, and I do understand that, but I'm saying all the residents of the county that are outside of our line area, this should, I honestly think this should be presented to them because, I mean, if we're taking the burden, then the county needs to know that the city is taking that responsibility, and the county is not taking that responsibility for making sure, taking care of their safety.
But the people in Willards and in Pittsville, they got coverage from their own fire departments. They don't care.
April's point, she's talking about the people in the Salisbury Fire District who are outside of the city.
Outside of the city.
I believe there was other people besides just nutters.
Oh, yeah, no, there were.
There was other people. Without your, um...
Culver Mill Village?
You'd have to ask them to pay for more. You'd have to say, "Hey, you're not currently paying this. Are you willing to pay?"
That's what I'm saying.
Some of them probably would.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. You know, because I feel like the county should be more responsible for this part of the finances than they really are, and the people that are in the underlying county needs to know that the county's not holding up to their end of bargain.
Yeah, and I think, you know, maybe one of the things in the solution is to discuss, how do we go about something like a fire tax district? That would apply, you know, it's no different than those outside that are on city water and sewer where they pay a premium. You know, I think there's still needs, you know, consideration on how we go about, which would definitely be state law, but.
There's two, there's two ideas when you're, and we don't have to beat this all around right now, but you either provide the service and then bill them, and then they can choose to pay it or not, or send them a fire tax bill, and then they can pay it or not. We don't have any mechanism to force that. Or you just stop providing the service, which is now a cost, a safety cost. So if you don't have the mechanism to truly be able to send someone to nutters, "Here's your bill, I need you to pay it," and if they don't pay it and they call you, do they say, "You didn't pay your bill, I'm going to sit on the street as your house burns down"? I mean, I don't think that's going to happen either. So the question is, is, there's not a mechanism in place to kind of force in that gap area.
Which, if it was, it would have to go through the state legislature.
Or it has to come to the county.
Yeah, or if it's not enabled, it needs to go through the state legislature. If it is enabled, then the county simply needs to make the decision. But, you know, in order to make that happen sooner than the next two years, one of two things has to happen. One, you have to find a solution that's politically tenable and agreeable to a majority of the council and the executive, or we have to figure it out without them. Those are the only options.
In order to negotiate with someone, you have to have somebody reasonable on the other side of the table that's going to negotiate.
Or such significant leverage that.
Or leverage that you can use.
We don't have, so we have to either figure it out for ourselves.
So they Scooby Dooed our volunteer money. Now they're Scooby Dooing our, they're holding us hostage.
That is my favorite verb.
Right, okay.
Could you spell that?
A Scooby Doo.
Scooby Dooing.
They just, this is, right. So this is really getting, they're really, they're really pinning us down in a really bad place.
Another one, for decades.
And this is, and then if you think of growth, this is, you can't grow.
Yeah, we can't.
There's a certain point where there is, like, we're doing so much right now, then where do you go from here if you?
I hate to do this, okay, I hate to do this right now, but this is sort of, we're getting out of the purview of budget.
All right, we won't talk anymore about Scooby Doo.
And I know, and there's nobody more into it than me, but.
I need some more air with that.
We need to, we need to move on and cover the current budget situation. And then I would recommend that we have another session after the budget is completed to discuss this. That's from.
And whatever, it's from session.
Okay. Other questions about the budget? I have a few, if no one else does, so.
Do you want me to run through my essentials list real quick?
Sure.
About the highlights of what we were.
I thought that was it.
You got food, Jack.
So there were a couple of things that we had pushed forward in our essential items list. One was the volunteer stipend that the, our volunteers currently get. Originally, it was funded at $100,000, and over the year, dropped down to $80,000. We were asking for that to be reinstated back to $100,000 for a couple of reasons. One is their lack of funding that they're getting from the county. All their actual funding that we're getting has now been cut, so they basically have no money coming in other than through donations and the Lacy Fund and all that stuff. So we were asking for that to be.
Increased.
Increased back to $100,000. In addition, some of our personnel services that we were looking to have, changes made, one was our part-time salaries. It was set somewhere around $50,000. It had been cut down to $25,000, where we were asking for it to go back up simply because there was no funding mechanism in previous budgets for things such as the National Folk Festival and Salisbury Marathon and those events that we've had to absorb out of current budget, which now is taking funds away from our backfilling of operations with injuries and sick leaves and all that stuff. Another item that we had requested for consideration was a position reclassification within our organization. And this is the position of our quartermaster or our maintenance supply position. Currently, this position is funded at a lieutenant's position. We were asking for it to be reclassified to a captain for several reasons. One, all the administrative positions that we currently have, with the exception of that, are at the captain's or assistant chief level. This position is responsible for everything that the fire department utilizes. That's all of the apparatus, all of our buildings. They do all of our inventory, from turnout gear to uniforms, to badges, to cleaning supplies. They are writing requests for proposals, invitations to bid, and they're managing million dollars' worth of fleet and buildings at the lieutenant level. So there is junior officer who's getting promoted from being a firefighter today to being a lieutenant, to now managing all of this. We just believe that it should be a higher level within the organization.
Is that Mike's position?
Currently, Mike Carball is in that position, yes. So take the name out of it.
So you were saying that that's a part, what did you say about a part-time?
No, it's a full-time position.
Okay.
But it's, yeah, it's a lieutenant now. So instead of getting promoted to a lieutenant and learning skills such as leadership and managing people, the buddy-to-boss transition, we're taking this firefighter, making him a lieutenant, and then saying, "Here, here are a million dollars' worth of buildings, here's a million dollars' worth of apparatus, here's inventories you've got to manage, manage budgets, and everything at a lieutenant's position."
I see.
In our world, we believe a lieutenant should be managing a single engine, single truck, developing the skills needed to be successful. Then moving on to captain, where now you get another side of the organization, administrative overview, where you start managing more things than just being lieutenant. The other item that we've already talked about was the Mobile Integrated Healthcare Provider. It was just in there as a placeholder to say, "We know we have grant money ready at this minute, but in the event that it does run out, I have to be able to do something for that position." And then we had a career ladder. It was the second part of the initial fire department pay plan that was created and implemented last year with the employees and the city administration. This was just adding an additional step in there to add for career opportunity advancement within the organization.
How many steps do you have there?
Right now, we have nine. So that would have added an additional step, so we were at 10. So we have all, I'm sorry, grade. We have nine grades, 30 starts in each grade.
Is that it?
That was our essential items. And then, of course, you have the CIP items that were in there. If you would like to talk about any of those items.
Let's go through the rest of the budget. Questions from anybody? I'll start then. We had talked about rotating turnout gear.
Rotating turnout?
Rotating turnout gear, replacement of. And we, this year's budget compared to last year's budget, it looks like we're, we have a 44% decrease in the amount of money we spend. Is that including, is that the balancing, or are we going to? I thought we were going to try to have like the same amount every?
This will be the same amount moving forward over the next almost 10 years.
Okay, so this is the correct amount?
Yes. So we went back, looked at our entire stock of turnout gear, and were able to put them in their gears and look at what the numbers were throughout the years. Then we were able to average it out over a 10-year period. So that number that you see as a placeholder right now should be the amount of money that we need in that turnout year account moving forward.
That's better for you.
There will be no more low, drastic high.
Perfect.
It is balanced out.
Perfect. Next question. I'm assuming that the percent for electricity costs comes from finance?
Comes from the energy consultant.
Boy, am I glad you're in, it's not here. Here's my issue. The percentages, well, to give you an example, there are some departments where the electricity has gone up 14%. There are other departments where electricity has gone down 15%, you being one. What the hell is going on?
Well, Jack, we can have Richard come in and explain the assumptions associated with each, but I would tell you, there are a lot of factors there. You know, one, this year will be the year that work is implemented as part of the phasing of the energy savings program. So maybe which buildings are going to actually get the best, the most benefits from the energy savings work. It may be the order in which those buildings are going to be, experience their improvements. So it could be that fire is getting more work done sooner. I can't speak to what that is, but, you know, Richard Anderson's assumptions are not edited by staff. They're only reviewed by staff. And then we push back before final numbers. So his final numbers are after discussion in an attempt to gain understanding. And so we don't, we don't mess with those things.
Well, that's why I'm not going into those kinds of, I just want to know.
But we can have Richard come in and explain.
Yeah.
And he can probably do a by fixture explanation, you know, whether it's vending machine improvements, which is, which is, believe it, which is, believe it or not, a big source of the cost savings. The vending machine outlets, light fixtures. We can have him come in and go through every bit of the detail if you want. Not a problem.
Yeah, those commodities were set by him. The only commodity that's not set by him is our fuel account, our gasoline account, and that's based on two thousand eighteen usage. And then the cost associated.
Average per gallon.
Cost per gallon, yes.
I don't have any issues with any of those because those seem to all match and I just find it hard to believe in. You answered part of it, Mr. Mayor. It could be because of the energy savings, but to see swings inside a department, inside departments of thirty percent scares me a little.
Yeah. Let's have him come in and explain.
Okay. Next. Says here, equipment. I don't know, it's five, seven, seven, zero, three, zero. I don't know what kind of equipment that is.
It's capital.
Ninety-one thousand dollars to zero.
It's capital, equipment.
Yeah, it was capital. So those items that were listed in there, one was a seventy thousand dollar contribution from the volunteers for bulletproof vest. If the, if the city funded part of it, they would do a contribution match to it. Well, again, it wasn't funded in the budget. They don't actually have the money, so that money was never spent. And then some of the other was some just other capital items.
Okay.
You're looking at those accounts. One of the things that sold this morning in the budget report was the computer hardware, software account. It was established by Bill. We've seen that all four of our computers are not in the budget any longer. So those are now six-year computers that have been cut from the budget also.
Is that one of those deals where they wouldn't support it anymore if we don't get them?
So we're looking at, we're on a six-year rotation. Thinking of moving out to a seven-year rotation. So Bill has this year prioritized those computers that definitely need replacing and then those that are sort of selling. We saw savings of fifty by just going with the highest priority and then moving to a seven-year plan. So I, if they're not in there, they're not in there, but they might not have been at, from Bill's valuation, at the highest priority to be replaced.
Are we going to do the same thing that we did with the turnout gear, trying to balance it so the numbers don't jump up and down all the time?
So, no.
Eventually, but the idea.
Yeah, eventually.
But it's tough because they're being replaced on a regular basis.
Yeah.
And hopefully, it would be a long, slow curve. It'd be nice if it would be a fast curve, but it's gonna, it's more likely to be a long, slow.
As long as that's the ultimate goal.
Yeah, but hopefully, that oscillation will get.
Sure, sure.
Bottom line is, historically, some years they bought computers, some years they didn't. And it was only three years ago that we started to say, we're going to get a routine replacement cycle.
Okay.
So it's, you know, particularly tough year.
Okay.
That's my questions. Anybody else? Wow. Okay.
They all really wanted to talk about the fire service group. That's what they wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine not funding everything.
Yeah.
The county's already taken away everything else, so.
Well, you guys know, I mean, you guys are doing a great job. You know, it's a shame we have to go through a lot of the stuff we have to go through, but it's certainly appreciated. And I want, I wish that you would take it back, take back the information. If the council wishes you the best, then please be safe and continue doing what you're doing because you're doing a fantastic job.
We appreciate it. You certainly have some stellar employees.
Yes, yes you do. And if anybody has the opportunity and wants to ride with them, ride with them too because it's a joy.
And we'll do so.
I will.
They'd love to have you.
I will.
Okay.
Yep.
Any day.
Just let them winter open twenty-four hours.
And the way I can stay up, I need to be up at like one o'clock in the morning.
They can do that.
Because I don't go to sleep like that.
You have to do your own twenty-four hour shift.
I'm not.
It's a long shift.
Friday night or Saturday night when we're doing it.
Do it on one of those nights where they have seventeen calls after midnight, and you definitely won't get any sleep.
Make sure the college is in session Friday night. The Crawls is, you know, they're playing very good. So when they win, win their next NCAA championship. Ride that night.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Ms. President, just to answer one of your earlier questions.
Yes.
One of the questions about the animals.
Yes.
Roughly three hundred and thirty animals a year that are taken to the mate society. Yeah, three hundred and thirty is the average. Two hundred cats, a hundred thirty dogs.
That's three hundred and forty-four dollars.
They took a goose from my house once.
And one goose.
I had one goose.
Two hundred dollars.
That's what they need to start.
How many are cats?
How much per cat?
Two hundred ninety-four.
For animals?
Nine thousand divided by three hundred and thirty.
I like my idea.
What was it?
Thank you.
You don't want to know.
Turn the red light up a tad.
No, I don't probably because I'm, I'm just. I'd rather have them just come all to my house, but I'm sure my HLA would love that. It might take a little bite. Yeah, that's enough.
A lot of it is, alright, people are not going through the process. It's a big. Unpopulating letters.
Yep. I know.
You're going to be tough on the next group.
Who's the next group?
Us.
So if you want the money, you better start.
Oh, I don't even know, I didn't even know we had anybody. Page what?
Defund the election. I said defund the election.
Page six of the, of this.
Kim's going to take us through the city council.
Okay, this is your budget. I was asked to just request every, every thing that pretty much was funded last year and the year before, the year before. With the exception of, there will not be a printing. There's not normally a printing account funded. Last year, there was, the clerk's office needed additional funds for printing because of our codification, which we normally pay for out of the clerk's office, was abnormally high. So, but other than that, everything is pretty much the same as which was what you had last year. Training, you know, there's only three of you going to MML this summer for the conference. It does seem like a lot, maybe four council, for five of you. But then if everyone went in the summer and then to the fall conference, it might would all be needed between that and travel and paying for those expenses. So it's, it's hard to, you know, judge not everybody is available to go. And you don't know that back a year ahead. So your computer at seventeen oh nine last year, you did not get a new laptop. You decided two or three years ago to go ahead and just get, just fund one a year because at one point, we bought all those Surface Pros at one time and then decided from there, once they were old and needed replacing, most of them have been replaced. Just to get a new laptop when somebody else comes on, it's a lot easier. It's sort of like your rotation, like Bill Garrett does for everybody else.
Yeah.
But you haven't really even done that, you know, not even a new one every six years. So it's, it's there if someone needs it.
Okay. Any question on the council?
I do. National League of Cities training.
That wouldn't be a city council thing, it would be a whole.
Why wouldn't?
I mean, no, it wouldn't. I don't know how we would.
It would go on the training.
Yeah.
I think, I think, you know, we spoke about it, and I haven't changed my opinion. I think that if you want to go to a meeting, I just, I don't see what the benefit is, the total benefit, the amount of money we pay. If you wanted to do that as part of the council budget and go to a meeting, we can do that.
Yeah.
It's the same as, it's the same as if you want to go to a conference, the MML sponsoring, that isn't one of the normal conferences. I don't have an issue with that. I just don't see the value of the money.
For membership.
For membership.
What he's talking about.
Membership.
So you're saying goes as a non-member?
It would just be a little higher, but it looks like it's, you know, got nothing.
Yeah. We just cover it out of there.
Okay, okay.
If you want.
I'm, 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 I'm not going to fight.
No, I'm.
I'm not.
Do you know what time of year that is?
Um, they usually, usually, it's one in May and then there's another one in the fall.
Fall.
Yeah, there's another one in the fall.
But was it March?
Yeah, they just had one in March and they have one in the fall.
Yeah, one in the fall.
How's anybody else feel about it?
I'm in agreement if somebody wants to attend the NLC conferences, I'm good with that. But I, I think we just don't see for us the value of throwing in for the full membership because it's worth like eight, ten thousand dollars a year, maybe more for the city.
I understand, I understand that part. I do understand that you not wanting to be an actual member of that because of the amount of money that they may take away from something else.
I think, and they do have stuff that's, you know, some valuable information.
Yeah, beneficial to.
But I think we get our more bang for our buck through MML and that. Because I think most of what we got going on happens in Annapolis.
And there is an MML representative on the NLC.
Yeah.
That reports to the MML.
But, but I understand me too. On one level, you're saying as far as the public is concerned, but there are some things that I have researched in the NLC that will be beneficial to the city and beneficial to my district. Because I'm living in a low-line poverty area and I, it's some things that I could learn from that to bring back to the city to help that district or either one, one or two, one and two, to bring back to the district. As a matter of fact, the whole entire city to help, you know.
Why don't you, why don't you put a thing together and get with us and, and at one of the work sessions, let's show what the advantages are.
Okay.
Because I think that you can still, most of the information is coming from the conferences. You can get the information at the conferences. If there's something outside of that that you get because of your membership, let me know what that is because we're not getting anything now.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. We're good. Let's move on.
Okay.
City clerk?
City clerk, page seven.
Yep.
Same thing, pretty much. Everything is, everything that's been requested was about what it was last year.
Except for the election.
Yeah, well, that's another department, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be another page.
Gotcha, okay.
Printing is, we requested six thousand, but I don't think it'll be even be half of that. That's the recodification, so, but there's no way to tell until we actually do it for the year. So, you know, we send our quarterly updates in, but we don't get quarterly estimates until they put it all to print. One computer is to be replaced. That's mine this year with the consolidation plan. We, we did not, either one go to conference this year. It just didn't work out personal-wise with family issues. So that won't be used. We have taken a couple of little classes through the IMC Association we belong to and plan to take a couple more. And HR had a couple that we took advantage of too, so we keep up. I mean, we do like to also train like you do, you know, keep abreast of what's going on. We took active shooter training the last time, and that, that was actually at one of our meetings, so there was no cost associated with that. That was very interesting. So, anyway. I learned if there's an active shooter, be a pole first thing. Stand still because they're looking for, you know, running rabbits, so anyway. And if that doesn't work, fight. But, um, any questions on this budget? Copiers. Which one?
What did you say?
Copiers is even less this year because of the citywide program. We all have the same ones. Okay. And now, do you want to go to elections? So page twelve.
Okay.
Okay, page twelve. So, um, it is fifty-one thousand five hundred. Last, four years ago, it was forty-eight, eight eighty-three. Three years before that, it was fifty-six. And two years before that, because at that point, we were doing, we were having two-year elections. That's forty thousand. So it's really, from twenty-eleven, it was four, it is.
Because we're going every four years.
Every four years, yes. And just to remind you, at some point before the election, we're going to have to do a budget and then just for first reading, in case there's a tie. Don't want it to happen, but in case it is, then we'll need to fund however many, you know. Yeah, it was, not even, talk about that.
And Kim, that just, that just doesn't, if it's not needed, it just doesn't.
We just don't do a second reading, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That way, it's in the works and because once we find out. Once you find out that there is. Wouldn't have enough time because it used to happen quickly.
Because it has to happen within a certain, further time.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we have to. But.
Okay. See attorney?
He should be here any minute. Would you like the mayor's office to go while we're late?
Why don't we have the mayor's office go while we're late?
Uh, so thank you for having us.
You're welcome.
It's been nice to jump in here now.
It's on nine.
I'll buckle up. So really, everything across the board is the same except for the salary line. With Allison leaving us, we realized that the best place for that position to land was with Chris doing communications work. So we've posted a job for media specialist. You might have seen it online. Have gotten some really good resumes in so far, knowing that that is where we need the power and the work to be done. Andy is doing a fantastic job. Um, Andy is doing a fantastic job, um, managing, um, we split, we split her portfolio between the two of us. Um, so that's, that's where we see that living. Um, it comes with a salary saving, so that's always nice.
Um, yeah, I, I will also just add, I mean, that was work that Allison was doing. Um, but the, uh, I'll, I'll go back to the conversation that we had when we created the second deputy city administrator position. Um, I, I appreciated, um, I think we all appreciated the potential that it had. Um, to help, um, create a narrower span of control. But it also created a lot of challenges. So I think narrowing that, narrowing the scope of that position up a bit and, and lowering its level. I mean, it's not supervising anyone. One, yes, there's a savings, but I think more importantly, it just clarifies things. Um, and I think if, if we want to continue to have that discussion at some point, um, you know, I think we're all open to it. But in the meantime, narrowing up the scope of what they do and, and focusing on the, the, um, uh, public communications, Public Information Act requests, um, response, all of those things. Those are the things where we're frankly drowning and have been without, without someone in that position. Not so much in the supervisory capacity. And that was really, part of that was growing pains probably, but that was really where we had the hardest time figuring out, you know, how that worked. And I think it was frustrating at times for Allison, it was frustrating, you know, for, for all of us just trying to sort through how that worked. And it's, it's a lot cleaner with one deputy, you know, the city administrator on the side, but.
So those were, uh, that was basically the.
Right?
Only change.
Mayor, you come here with me.
Um, what questions you have?
I, I actually have none. Well, anytime we can get a reduction of cost by.
So the, the line item that says pub, obviously that's publications and not the Irish pub.
Hold on, let's check.
Yeah, that's, um.
Just publication.
Periodicals.
Right, right, right.
Newspapers, journals.
I figured so.
Yeah, we do, we do.
I'm just.
Well, we do, uh, subscribe to, uh, the Daily Times. I don't know.
Governing magazine.
Governing magazine, but yeah, not, not many pay. M M L, I think that one comes free.
Who you pay for?
Come on in. Good timing. Anybody have any questions for, uh, the mayor?
No, I was just joking.
Thank you.
It's an important clarification.
I just wanted to, yeah, I just don't too much, no Scooby Doo in on the, on the line item.
I guess I could even miss, but thank you for doing what you do, Mr. Mayor. Even though we did have to override your figure. I had to get that in, I'm sorry.
But it felt good to do that, didn't it?
It did. Thank you, Mayor.
I love you both.
You too, man.
Mr. Tillman.
There's a lot of love.
Dynamic coin.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to be involved.
So we're at page fifteen.
Thank you.
City attorney.
Look at this, you're right on it. Okay, is this enough money?
What is that figure?
Three fifty-four, eight hundred. We're not gonna have any more budget amendments.
This is, um, right now, we're estimating the total fees this year to be three sixty-nine, five fifteen. Because of the litigation. Still ongoing. Uh, I mean, for example, the, the company one case has basically cost over seventy thousand dollars since its inception.
What case is this?
The fire department, volunteer fire company that left. And in, in the month of January alone, that, the fees for that case alone were eleven thousand dollars. That's because we had the hearing coming up and all the discovery. Next of February, the charges for that and the other cases should be down somewhat. But not, in February, not because the cases went away, but because I got the flu. So you, you basically had a sick lawyer for two weeks, which saves you so much.
You do that every year.
Never had that happen before, but.
To the contractor, you no longer can get a flu shot.
But it, I mean, that's really, that's a substantial, when you look at that amount of money, that, that case is gonna continue to be an expense. Um, until resolved. Luckily, we, we did resolve a lot of things in January. We resolved the dispute with Carrato, we resolved, um, you know, what dispute, the dispute with the county. Those two big things were eliminated in January and some of the bill in, in January goes to that as well. Um, but, you know, we still have ongoing litigation. Luckily, the A C L U case is being paid for by the insurance company. Um, we have a fifty thousand dollar legal fee bill there, so they're gonna eventually exceed it unless that case is resolved. But the other, the other litigation, most of it's covered, the, the A C L U case.
After, after fifty, we have to.
We have a fifty thousand dollar coverage for that because they're alleging that the city, um, you know, violated their, you know, legal rights. Instead of committed a tour against them, which would be fully covered by our insurance. Um, but we do, we do have that insurance coverage. Now, the, the good, the other good news is, is that if there is an award of legal fees as a result of the A C L U case. That's gonna be paid for by Legit because they've agreed that the reason that we didn't turn over everything was they were sort of arguing their case.
It's their fault.
So we, we kind of got, you know, I, I mean, originally I was hearing that it wasn't gonna be covered and I called up there and complained and said, look. You know, we were ready to turn over those records, you know, you guys were the ones who had possession of them, not us. So.
So how confident, and we, we, we go through this every year. The same thing that, that always happens. Uh, you don't know who's gonna sue you. In this day and age, who knows?
If you look at two thousand eighteen, you had three forty-two, you said three sixty-nine this year, three fifty's kind of in between. You've got one big case that's coming off the books. It's better than the two eighty, that was originally budget, I think three fifty's closer to an actual.
Well, there's, there's really three major things that have come off or about to be off, if you include in stuff. Yeah, if it's like resolved, they're, they're still arguing about some of that.
Sure.
Both, both more close, um, you know.
Yeah, I think three fifty is more, two eighty is, I think we are now in the ballpark of where, where it's trending.
We gotta pay the bill, what, what it is, and we have no control, this is one of the, one of the areas you have no control over. And.
Well, no matter how you budget it, you're going to have to do a budget amendment every year on legal, county has to do the same thing. But it's, and I'm not, not gonna get it right.
I don't count this one in.
We also have a history here, when too much money's budgeted, you get some back. I mean, I, I'm not creating my own work or going out and buying paper to use up my budget.
That's not what the mayor's doing.
See, Mark's gonna believe you. You make jokes like that in here, Mark's like, what'd you say?
You have to take, that's a joke, Mark.
I understand, I just wanted to. I, I, I understood the dynamic when I, first one.
I gotta get my shots in when I can. Anything else you, um?
No, I mean, most, I don't think there's any, I mean, there are always unknowns out there. But, um, right now, we pretty, we've been at it with all this litigation now for a couple of years now. And, uh, a lot of it's winding up. I think we know what's out there. But I can tell you for a fact that the company number one case is now entered the discovery phase and that's when it gets expensive. So we're, we're going to be generating a lot of paper in response to them, which some of that we've already done. And then we're gonna have to comb through everything they give back to us and, uh, we've, the change of.
It's gonna be expensive for folks.
Yes, it is, it is expensive and, and we changed judges mid-stream in that case, which made it even more expensive.
Okay. Okay. Questions for the, for Mark? Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it.
I'll go back and keep working on stuff that you guys are unscrewing.
I think Jeanne's gonna be up in a couple minutes.
Okay, can we take a little short file?
Yes.
Now I'm trying to get in somebody who can help him find money.
Okay, I like that idea. All right, Jeanne, what do you got?
Well, there's really not a lot of big changes. Everything's pretty much the same. Um, we have the same amount in our employee picnic and banquet. Still the same amount in, uh, house keys for employees. I'm, I'm still hanging on to the last twenty-five hundred dollars of that for our next settlement. But we were able to help two employees already and waiting on a third, uh, to be able to help them with their closing costs on their homes. Here in, uh, the city of Salisbury. Um, let's see, workers' comp, that's a rather large, uh, account. We're still waiting on them to give us their final, um, best and final when it comes to this year's premiums. And I do need, uh, equipment this year. We're on a, um, replacement schedule and so this year we had to, um, get some new computers. And so that was.
And the workers' comp, did our, um, frequency mod go up or down, do you know?
Haven't gotten a final.
From last year?
Haven't gotten it yet.
Yeah, we don't usually get the final until sometime at the council level. So we have a, on the worksheet for council, we'll be making adjustment to, but before the final reading. That's right, yeah. That's where the final reading. Yeah, you're more than the lines.
That's ridiculous, they can't, serious.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's a computerized number system.
Right.
Okay. We've tried to put a lot of encouragement in the past and it's, this is, you know, about all you can get out of it, yeah.
Sure.
We're even using a third-party, uh, encourager.
You know, Keith doesn't use words like pressure, you know, it's encouragement.
It's encouragement.
See, I like the, I like pressure.
Well, I, I think his encouragement is, is pressure.
I know it is, but I just, he's being coy.
Well, we didn't do it this year just cause we've done it the last couple of years in a very serious way. And we did get some, we did get some bang for a buck for that.
We did. Um, mainly because, you know, we're, I mean, the actual premiums themselves are decided by the workers' compensation commission.
Last year, Jeanne did a fantastic job in getting, uh, concessions, reductions. I think we went through three phases. Note, that's not gonna be good enough, note, that's not gonna be good enough. And so it actually went through three iterations. So she did a great job of working, working, uh, working that number.
Needling them, I think is the word I use.
Challenging.
Yeah, so we're needling now, every day, so. And I think Avery Hall's number is on my speed dial. So that is the one thing we're definitely waiting on. We did get, um, our Blue Cross and Blue Shield information in, so we were able to see, um, very small rate type for that.
Hey, what is the, uh, retirement match?
Mm-hmm, that is the four fifty-seven, or do you mean the Maryland state pickup?
It's five oh two, oh five five.
Right.
It went from thirty-two grand to fifty, fifty-one.
Because, uh, one of our goals is to increase our membership in the four fifty-seven, uh, by twenty percent.
So that's a plan.
It's, it's a plan. We've, uh, went through an R F P.
Okay.
And selected a, a new company, uh, that has better investment options. Uh, in non-proprietary, um, accounts. So we feel like we're gonna have a better opportunity for more individuals to enroll. And we're concentrating in, in an area right now that doesn't get a match. And that's, you know, with all those individuals who participate in L E O S.
Gotcha.
So that's what we've been doing over the last two years. So we've seen, um, there's a fourteen percent increase this year and a twenty-two percent increase last year. And the majority of those were in that arena. So now with the new program coming through, we can concentrate on everyone. Um, regardless of what age or how many years of service you have. Because it's not one of those programs that you have to wait until you're fifty-nine and a half to take it.
Right.
You can actually take it as soon as you, you know, leave.
Gotcha.
It's worth mentioning that through a, uh, R F P process, we were able to, uh, award empower uh, to be the provider and they have a, a, a much more powerful and robust, uh, portal. So that the employees can interact directly with their, uh, membership contributions and see what their plan looks like. They can do what ifs, like if I, if I changed it by X, what would it mean to my, uh, monthly retirement when I, and they can establish goals. It's a, it's a fantastic.
Training in that? Did they get training?
They will. We haven't brought them, we haven't brought them on board yet.
Did they do the training?
Yes.
And they're, I mean, they're good, they, this isn't, they do this nationwide and they're one of the largest in the country, so we're definitely getting up there.
And the, um, reduction in consulting fees, was that a special project that we had just for last year?
We had to put that under for, we did a, um, combined with the county. We did a claims audit, it was the county and the Board of Ed and that was our, part of it was our portion. We did a claims audit on Care First.
Oh, okay.
To see if there was.
Gotcha.
Anything there that they may have misrepresented, missed, and, um, it all came out good.
Good, okay. Cause the other ones, it's normal to the other year, to the previous year, the eighteen, about the same.
Uh, when, when do we do the O P A P? Keith, is this a non-O P A P year?
Actually, I think, I think we might be back on, back on, back on, I have to.
For F Y twenty?
Yeah, I have to double check, make sure. I think that it was eighteen and nineteen that we have, uh, already contracted for and I have the numbers for it.
Okay.
But I won't actually pay for that until the following.
Till twenty, F Y twenty, right, okay. So those are pretty much it?
That's my question. Anybody else have any questions?
How many, uh, city employees do we have participating in the tuition program?
Right now, four.
Four.
In the degreed tuition program, yeah, four.
We had, uh, we were discussing the fire personnel today. Uh, some of them, I guess, take, uh, classes for some of their certifications. And I guess they're, they were wondering if, if, is that, was that coming out of the fire department training or is that out of this? It was out of the fire department training. Oh, and also how many, uh, city employees you said we had for the.
Participation.
Participation in the housing program?
Right now, this year, we've actually been able to give away two grants.
Okay.
I'm waiting on the third. They may not get to go to settlement before the end of this fiscal year. So, but that'll be okay, cause we have the money in there for next year. But we upped it last year to get three, uh, employees in. And we almost made it like last month, but that particular person had a little, there's credit then. They should have probably had to participate. So, but I have another, I have them lined up. They're ready to go. As soon as they get settlement, you know, got a settlement date, then we'll just drop the money in the account.
Okay. Is there no other questions?
Gosh, that was tough. Thank you.
Thanks for all you do, Jeanie.
Oh, thank you.
Jeanie?
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Government office building? GOV?
GOV? Who's doing GOV?
Where are we at? I wanna make sure.
Government office building.
We can come back.
I think it's probably between Keith and I, I mean, Keith and I.
Hi, Bill.
How are you?
How's everybody?
Doing great.
Well. All right, why don't you go through your essential items real quick and then we'll open the floor for questions.
Okay, ready?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we had two essential items that we're going for this year. One is gonna be a merit increase for GIS analyst Carl. He's been a, just a total rock star. So that was in there under salaries clerical. It was a, I believe the ideas are gonna be the three steps with the increase.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I'm just catching up.
Okay.
John is the assistant director on the GIS side. Do you wanna kind of just brief them on some of the stuff that Carl's done to justify the increase that we're asking for?
Carl's been a phenomenal asset to the city. He's allowed to take our, our GIS program. His skills in programming and managing the software to levels that rival many of the major metropolitan areas in the state. He's a hometown boy and he's exactly where he wants to be. So normally individuals that skill set, we can't keep them down here because of the pull of the salary on the other side of the bridge. But he's happy where he's at. But like I said, he has developed techniques and analytical techniques and algorithms for us that automated many of our systems, provided cost-saving analysis back to the city. Let us move into areas that previously we were unable to.
Did, just curiosity, curiosity, did he have clearly defined goals and targets that he met?
Yeah, we have a career ladder in place. This is in addition to the career ladder he has. He's just been such an exemplary, he's, I, I can't, I almost can't quantify how wonderful he has been for the department, for the city as a whole. So this is, everybody in our department has a very clearly defined career ladder for, for the entire organization. So Carl, yeah?
Well, it is a quantifiable goal, a quantifiable something. Three years ago I established a RFP for GIS Support Services. I had six contractors outside vendors under that RFP. Last year because of Carl, I was able to drop to three. I do not plan on renewing any of those contracts in this upcoming year again, because of the work Carl's able to do. So that is significant savings and vendor dollars, outside consulting dollars that he has kept in the house.
That's significant. Okay.
And then the other item that is on our critical items is the high availability virtual environment. That is on the IT side of the house and that is essentially set up three high-end servers. We're gonna start with the fire department. It's part of the CIP that was worked in here. Did you want us to touch on that or is that gonna be separate?
Yeah, you can touch on that.
Okay. That is setting up three high-end, high storage servers that can act in an array. Do you wanna kind of?
Yeah. So what we're looking to do is develop a high availability, high resiliency server environment. Currently the city's servers are aging and we're gonna have to start looking at replacing those servers in the next few years. This environment, we clustered three servers together using the new technology in Windows Server 2019, which will enable us, enable us to virtualize a server. Basically, virtualizing the server is taking the data and the operating system and what you see on the end, as an end user, and putting it into a virtual environment which takes out the hardware portion of the server. That's where usually the failures happen as the servers age. This would also enable us to stand up new servers without buying that hardware, which could save us probably at least $6,000 per server. And then the high resiliency of this built-in with this project is that the virtual servers will sit on this cluster of three servers. If one server goes down, the virtual server would actually move itself to a server that's not down. So that way we have a close to 99.999% uptime on all our servers. This is our webpages, this is our munis, all our critical infrastructure within the city.
And the CIP, it's a, over the three years, the first three years, the first batch of three machines, three servers are gonna be at the fire department. The second year, the three batch, the batch three is gonna be at the GOV. And then the final year is gonna be in the police department. So we'll have a total of nine servers, all acting in one giant array. They, they can fail over from site to site, from machine to machine, allowing, in the event that an asteroid hits the GOV, we'd be able to, all our services, all our systems would fail over immediately to another physical location.
So there's two redundancies.
Yes.
I have a question. The, all the hardware that's in closet at Judy, will that disappear?
Yes and no.
It would be consolidated down to three servers.
Yes, it would be three servers.
In that room there, they're not gonna go upstairs?
Well, we can, because it would be three servers, depending on the size, we could maybe put it in the, in the main server. And the problem with that is the county has access to that room as well. So we still need a secured, isolated location. But if we're doing that, we could theoretically explore another location here in the building that we can put behind lock and key to kind of keep the noise down for Judy.
It'd be great, if it's possible.
There's a lot of fans running in Judy, in the, at the spine Judy, so it's, it gets quite noisy there.
Can't have that one.
Come on. So that's it for the, the CIP and the, the critical items that we have.
Question. Looking out forward, what is the, based on the technology and the growth, what is, when will those things become obsolete? Don't tell me next Tuesday.
Wednesday? We're looking at, it's, we're specking these things out to be future-proof. The good thing is that the storage arrays, you can literally just slap on another array and then add a storage as needed, willy-nilly. And it's very inexpensive. The servers are gonna be specked in such a way, which is why it does have a hefty price tag of 55,009. Because they are, that they're geared so that we can scale them up, we can scale them down as needed. And then user resources on these things will last us for, I guess, what, 10 years plus?
Easily.
Easily 10 years. So right, right now the average server's lasting us five to six, depending on the load on the server. And this, as Steve said, would allow us to spin up as, basically as many servers as we want, as frequently as we want. We can set up test servers, test environments to do all manner of stuff in-house. It'll really give us flexibility to do anything that we need to do and then have the, kind of the bonus resiliency to fail over in case of emergency. And if I also made, the big thing about that is we recently stood up Tyler Content Management, which finished today, Keith. So you're good, good to go. We're gonna be deploying that out soon. But that was set up on one of our secondary servers because we didn't have a machine in-house that was powerful enough to actually run this, this add-in for munis that we had to have for tax billing. So we made alternate arrangements on another one of our servers to kind of lessen the load on it. But we would be able with this new system to migrate the new Tyler module just right over onto the, onto the new array, which would allow it to do what it needs to do, but without any degradation of service on the existing system that it's living on.
Any, any questions from the council?
Well, I have a question, but I'm almost afraid to ask it because I don't know, you might have even talked about it. That's how much I know about computer stuff.
All right.
But I wanted to, there's a couple online items. So what is CONS.gis? Is that something to do with the, something server you were talking about?
That's GIS. That's consulting, yeah. Let me also preface another number that, in the actual budget, everything here is, is, in the main budget itself, except for, for that one CIP item, is level funded. It's all services that we already have, we already operate with. We're not asking for anything else new. And I tried to kind of spell everything out exactly what it is. So every item is, the line item is not exactly what the money's gonna be used for. There's no, I don't think there are any blanket, just, you know, blanket accounts that we need additional money for. But yeah, the GIS consulting.
Yeah. You know, the, the GIS consulting, the, the $12,000 line item, is that the one you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. That money goes toward projects. We partner with Eastern Shore Regional GIS Cooperative. We use that money to fund our student intern program. We normally carry two student interns throughout the fall, spring, and summer semesters. One from the Computer Science Division, one from the GIS Division, Geo Sciences Division, to come in and, as, as a labor force. It's a lot cheaper than funding up a tech or an outside group. And also projects like if we have utility drawings that we need digitized, we can go through ESRGC for that. And the cost point on that is normal GIS services, just a GIS tech runs anywhere from $80 to $120 an hour, depending on the outside vendor you use. And through a contract with the Clark County Council who subsidizes the university to work with us, we can get those services for $40 an hour or less. So it cuts our price point only in half. So that, that money is slot earmarked for throughout the year to pay for those interns and to do those side projects to keep our day bases up.
So the interns come from the university, Salisbury University?
Yes, ma'am.
I also have to touch on, I forgot to mention, we have two new accounts set up for our, our department this year. One in water and one in sewer. 84080 or I guess an 81080, more than one account. But there's about $107,000, $117,000 that is newly added to our, our budget for this year. But every single thing here has been moved over from DID. Amanda Pollak and her crew were paying licensing and software costs for all these different products that we oversee, we manage. So we figured it would just make sense to move everything from her department to ours that we can just, you know, pay the invoices when they come in, renew the licensing, handle it all in-house. There is a large chunk that's moved into our department, but it's being, it's been moved from DID. It's not, it's not new money. So we're gonna be handling all the licensing costs from her and I's crew this year.
So, C Jack, a couple lingered things still from the reorg. Couple more, but we're getting there.
And, and just, and just the new leases, just because the building over on Church Street, the new lease for $11,000?
It says new leases, $11,000.
Oh, that's the payment for the, the high available virtual environment.
So we'd be losing $55,000? It's 55, the hardware?
55, it's, well, that's the hardware, the server licenses, the seat licenses. So it's, yeah, it's, it's all inclusive. Everything is 55,000.
Well then.
Then what's the new lease?
What's the lease?
Keith would have to, Sandy tried to explain how that worked. I didn't quite understand because I'm not an accountant. But it was, yeah, it's, it's the payment on the 55,000 for the, the. We were in my old cash.
We lease the virtual server, 55,000.
So the total cost is really per year, 66,000?
Well, the, the total cost that we're gonna actually be out of pocket is just the lease payment because we have offsetting revenue for the 55. We'll have the lease proceeds, 55, and expenditure for 55. So it'll be net zero and then we'll pay the, so we're out of pocket the 11 for the lease payment.
It's, it's an accounting thing, but instead of paying for it with 55 this year, we're paying for it every five years at 11 each year. So if we were to get this, it'd cost us $11,000, but we're not paying for it all right now. We're spreading out the payments.
Lease proceeds.
Monthly payments, monthly, yearly payments.
Kind of like you and vehicles.
I know, it's four o'clock.
So, so basically it's for a virtual server.
It's for the virtual servers, yes. Those three servers that, that allow us to spin up all the virtual environments to run the different servers and stuff.
It's also worth mentioning, you can look up here, John had the great idea of separating his GIS so he can quickly manage his GIS budget. So if you see an account that has a project of 100, that's all the GIS activity right there. So he has it kind of all in one place. Even though they are, some of them are in general fund, some of them are in the water sewer fund.
So we have one virtual server?
Three.
Yeah, okay.
There's actually three physical servers, real servers, that create an environment of virtual servers.
We're not buying all one.
Okay.
Forgive, forgive me. I've had, I've had the same thing probably you're having. $55,000, that's an expense next year.
No, so if you look at it as like a car payment.
So this is true with anything that's leased, Jack. There are three things to look at. It shows up in three places. There is the, the total expense, which equals a total revenue line. So the same amount, so 55,000 out, 55,000 in.
You got it.
Lease proceeds, and then there's the actual.
That's fine. I am, yeah. We don't do it that.
That's exactly why I do IT.
This is the difference between private sector and public sector.
And I, and I, and I, I'm still trying to wrap my head around the virtual.
It's like, it's like if you were to take a computer tank, a, if you were to.
So we're paying, well, I, I know.
All of our stuff will exist.
Upwards.
We're not gonna be relying on a physical piece of hardware.
Right.
So we're, we're relying on our munis server if the power supply dies.
See what I mean?
Yes, yes.
It's hard to understand.
I just wanna go touch.
It's like, it's like when, when you had Solitude, the Purdue commercial? Where the sun goes, it's in the cloud, Dad.
Yes, it's in the cloud. Yeah, okay, all right.
Only in this case, I shouldn't confuse anymore, but it's not the cloud.
Okay.
It's, it's.
See, just stop, just stop.
We're there.
I was reading and then, then I was like, oh no. Okay, it's not.
It's a private cloud, it's a private cloud here in the city. It's not, it's not, it's not out in the cloud.
It's a private cloud.
It's a private cloud here in the city.
I just have to trust you. Like I did earlier this week.
Yes.
Thank you. I just have to trust you.
Okay.
I'm good. It's a lot, it's, it's, it's pretty massive. That's a pretty interesting, you know, I'm glad you're coordinating all that. That's amazing. Stop it. No, it's amazing. I'm glad you're coordinating it and I'm, that's not my, really, that's not my ability.
It's also part of our COC, so if something were to happen, we have to kind of account for all manner of possibilities. It just allows us to do that.
Anytime, anytime you can run side by side to redo stuff.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. Cause you can't screw up the big one. Then when you're ready, you hit the button.
That's right.
Fantastic.
See?
Yeah?
I wasn't, I had two toes. Okay, any other questions?
No. It's clear.
Thank you. All right, thanks guys. Appreciate it very much.
Before they go, I'm sorry, just a couple things. There are some other things that I think, you know, maybe after this budget cycle that have been requested, that we haven't been able to fund. But I think we need to try to, you know, have conversations about. They're all really important. I think things that you can survive.
I think things that you can survive without, but we can't operate at our fullest. I'd love for these guys to kind of give you a presentation of what we're talking about, what those items are, because it'll take some discussion, maybe, you know, a work session, maybe some budget work session after you're comfortable with this year's budget, or, I don't know, I don't know how, when, but I...
We were shooting for the moon this year, and...
But it's, but it exposes the potential. When, when you shoot for the moon and you see what's possible, it exposes the potential. I think it's all worth talking about. So I, I think, whenever we can make time for that, Mr. President, you and the council, when you're ready for that.
I love ROI.
Yeah, yeah.
We, I'd say that we are one of those lucky departments where, when we implement a, a system or a solution, we tend to be able to justify, even quantify an ROI on something. Hands, hands down, just...
If you want an easy vote for me, ROI is king.
And then, can I just reiterate that one, one of the ways that Carl has provided a lot of benefit to, to John and the team is the streetlight analysis. We've got a ton of information, so when we're ready for that conversation, you're going to have a lot of good info.
That didn't take long.
Yeah, you're going to have a lot of good info. In fact, there's a way to show some of the modeling. Do we, I don't know if we have the capability of doing that in council chambers when we're here.
Yeah, we can, we can put it up on the web and then bring it in.
Okay.
Since we're on Carl and Fantastic Things, I had a conversation with David Fitzgerald at EMS this morning. You know, the, the, sometimes the relationship between the city and the county is contentious, and especially when you involve fire chiefs from the outline areas. We, Carl did a fire response analysis, and we basically have fed that up through EMS, through county, and let them chew on it. And we're getting extremely, we had a meeting this morning, extremely positive feedback response. They're taking this out to the outline fire chiefs, they're looking at his analysis, and they're rather excited about this. So it's, it's a good way for, the city is pushing a product out.
Is it the HICs?
They didn't want it, and then they actually sat, sat there and looked at the results.
Yeah.
And so, you know...
Just pick the chip.
You know, we're sliding stuff out there. And this is due, again, to his, his capabilities, is giving, making inroads for us that a year ago would have never happened.
Good. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Fantastic, thank you. Appreciate it.
GOB?
Yeah.
Is this it for today?
No, GOB.
I know, I know, after them, is that right? Okay. All right.
I thought Julie was going to hop in a hot seat.
How would she like to go in days, couple of days?
Oh, yeah.
No.
It used to be.
Yeah.
Seriously, really.
I'm sorry.
Right, Tim?
Yes.
I'm a stream, I'm a stream-wine kind of gal.
So I don't, I also don't see procurement on the schedule in general. So I don't know if she's prepared for that now, but...
Good GOB.
Because James already promised me that was it. He's already promised.
Uh-oh.
With the hot seat.
They're getting...
Oh, really? Really?
Yeah.
You're the third person to do it today.
It's a test.
I wonder what about the central girl.
Or 195.
Hey, Jennifer, how did I misschedule you for procurement of your...
Oh, I assumed we would talk about it now, because it wasn't. Procurement technically wasn't on the schedule, so I just assumed it would be now. It would take five minutes.
Where are we at?
Yeah. What are we doing?
And then she said she liked to do... 19, bottom 18. I have 20.
Instead of one.
All right, where, what, tell me what page we're on.
19 to 20, the bottom, very bottom is 19, and then will be 20.
Got it. Good, I see it.
Are we doing, which, oh, so we're doing GOB first?
GOB.
Okay.
Mm-mm.
Yes, no?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so this is the budget for the government office building. Overall, there's about an 87,000 net increase over the previous year, really due in part to sort of three buckets. About 38,000 in building and fixture improvements. That would include replacing grounds lighting for the GOB, replacing the men's room toilet partitions, removing an underground fuel storage tank and replacing the walkway, and 5,000 to replace chairs and council chambers. So that's part of that 87,000 net increase. It also includes 17,000 for an ESG, the ESG settlement.
Angela, I, I, you know we split half and half typically with the counties, so, okay, I just want to make sure you, because you're new to this.
I apologize.
Thank you, yes.
We're new, we do some new seats. Yeah, we do.
17,000 for the ESG settlement, and then about another 56,000 in CIP items, which would include building improvements as well, such as engineering for replacing the roof, an ADA compliant restroom, women's room partition replacements, and a heater, a water circulation pump. It's becoming more difficult to find replaceable parts. And it's an aging system. So overall, it tallies about an 87,000 increase over the previous fiscal year. If you remember, the previous fiscal year, we did not fund much, if any, CIP improvements for the building.
And that was due, we got some numbers late from them, after we'd already gone through this process, so we did not do a budget amendment to do that. We passed it in, sent it out in this year's request.
So that's the 80,000, 587, and there's more, there's got to be seven grand more, where is that?
Well, again, the 87,000 is, is just really a net, so any minuses, any additions over the previous year.
Just for, as these recommendations were put into place, some of our team met with the county and discussed these, and we came to consensus on most of these, on pretty much all these items. So in the past, things have been kind of just getting to us without a discussion, and moving forward, it'll be an annual discussion for CIP and just improvements so that we are in agreement with, with any increases.
That's the 513405, okay? For item 534301.
534301.
The one that's 248,5015, on page 20.
Oh, I got it. I see.
That's buildings.
Okay.
It went up 87, 751.
Okay. Overall, I'm going down.
It's a 1976. It's the second column, 1976 to 285.
No, I'm looking at the total. It's 244 to 285. And if you had 87,000...
218?
219?
Projection.
Oh, yeah.
So there's a building modification of 160 to 197, 37,000 within that projection.
Don't pay attention to the projection column, but the revised column is loaded with all of that. See that 269? Somebody wants to bring this up again, but now that you did, that's the settlement, that's...
I had to do this at four o'clock.
See the 269 at the second from the bottom in the revised budget column? That's, that was the settlement. That was the settlement for the county. For the chiller.
Pass 41. Yeah, I had to point that out. I'm just too tired to fight. I'm sorry, I, I'm tired. Any questions? Okay. So let's go and go on to procurement and take it out of that. Page... I had to permit before, I don't know. I know, it was right after...
Start on page 14? 14? Yeah, 14. Goes in at 15.
Got it.
Procurement's a very small budget. This year, there's, huh? Well, I think it's a very small budget.
That's, that's a fair statement.
Overall, it's just really a minor difference year over year for procurement, just a small uptake to account for a 3% increase. And let me find the line item for you. Computer software. Hold on a second, I'm sorry. It's for our procureware procurement portal.
Is it 15,000?
In 546029, just a small increase, 3% year-over-year increase. And then between the travel and training account, some years there's more travel than others, some years there's more training than others. Between the two accounts, there's a small net increase of about 600, that's so staff can attend what's called the National Institute for Government Procurement. They're having a regional forum in Ocean City, Maryland. This is the first time since I've been here that they're offering it that close. Normally, the, they have an annual forum that is in, you know, travels around the different cities throughout the country, so we're doing sort of a mini forum close by, and it's an excellent opportunity for the staff to get to attend a smaller version of a forum.
It's good to meet. How many, uh, staff-wise, how are you on staffing?
Yeah, so we've been, we have four total. We've been in the hiring process for a little while for our new administrative assistant. We just extended an offer today, and then I'm, she said yes on the phone, so I hope we're going to be fully staffed here in about a month.
Okay, nice. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
No one else in the hall, right?
Well, there's just one more.
Okay. Before we go offline, Keith, thank you very much for, this gets easier every year, and I think a lot of that's due to setup, you guys putting in, but I think also, the format, the format is really simple, that it assists up. So thank you. Thank you to the council members for being prepared for their, with their questions. Makes it a lot better. Our next session is...
24?
24, 21 states, 24.
When's the 24?
24.
8:30 to 1.
Yep, and... It goes from there.
So if we haven't heard it before 1 o'clock?
Yep.
It's, it's...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Or it's on...
Thank you all.
Andy? Tim? Thank you. We're off.